And please state your name and address. Okay, hello everybody. My name's John Perkins. I live 2815 Cedar Street. That's one of the two entrances of the Dogwood Drive East community. Did the information that I sent regarding this issue get distributed?
Yes.
Very good. All right, so then you know a great deal already. So I'm here to present a petition on behalf of the Dogwood Drive East community. There's a paper petition which I have here and online petition which is still running and collecting signatures. For the record, I'll read the petition. It just says that Bruno wants to build a 12-family apartment complex on a single lot in the back of our neighborhood at the end of Dogwood East, which will irreversibly change the character and stability of our historically single home community. This, we feel, will reduce the property values, increase congestion and traffic, damage the safety, comfort, convenience, morals, and general welfare of the Dogwood East and Cedar Street community or neighborhood. So our petition was circulated in the surrounding neighborhoods and contains the signature of the vast majority of the residents and property owners. And there was a meeting yesterday to make public and transparent the concerns and issues of this challenge. Thank you, Mary Ellen Vaughn. Our goal is to stop these project buildings and instead build something more in line with the character and tradition of the neighborhood. There may be some change. But the point remains that you have approved a zone change that does mostly the opposite of what these zones supposed to protect. Conserve the value of the land and property to lessen or avoid congestion, to protect the character and stability of this residential area. I get it that once a zoning is changed, as long as the proposed building fits the zoning and the property, if all the boxes are checked, you have to approve it. What we don't get is that why you, the city council, that approved this ordinance to change the zoning, would think that your constituents would be good with putting these project buildings deep within our neighborhood. You approved a land use change and then a zone change in rapid succession. The transparency to the affected citizens appears to be a $50 classified ad in the paper that no one, virtually no one reads, and a sign stuck at the end of a Deedian street. I don't know if the land use change was advertised or how or if it was. And I realize that there will never be transparency in the backroom dealings and manipulations among special interest concerns that occur long before an ordinance reaches this council. We, the people that you represent, depend upon you not only to look at checked boxes, but to assert that the change makes sense, that it passes the smell test as well. And what's the worst thing that could happen if the requister of the change passes the property to another interest, as in the case in this example? You don't just have to do the minimum legal requirements. You are stewards for your people. It's clear that you're intelligent and creative people. Use that for your people. Please embrace the intent of the procedures that you follow in this chamber. Don't take shortcuts. Not sure why there's several readings of an ordinance to be required, why you would read it consecutively in the same session, for example. We feel like in this example of what we hope is an unintended consequence is that the city is more interested in the hundreds of families and persons that will flow through this neighborhood in the next decade, rather than it is of the families that have lived, supported you, and improved the community for many decades. We know there's a housing shortage within the city. We get it. And we're not opposed to progress. But think what you could be doing to the people that have been living and improving this neighborhood for decades before you turn it upside down. Work on real transparency. Get your webpages updated. Figure out methods of communicating with your citizens. Anybody have anything from me?
No. Thank you, Mr. Perkins. We gratefully appreciate it. Everything has been distributed. All the minutes from the meeting yesterday has been distributed to all the city council members as well.
Very good.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
You bet.
I would like to take this time quickly to address Mr. Perkins and the neighborhood at large. That is within my ward. I live in that neighborhood. And talking with many of the citizens over the past couple of days, certainly have a better feeling as to their temperature regarding the events that have transpired since October of last year leading up to date. And if there's one thing that I think is obvious, it's that voters and constituents are not being properly apprised of the issues affecting their neighborhoods, neighborhoods such as rezone as you pointed to, although the law only requires publication in a newspaper, for which very few people read, and then also the place of a signage, which oftentimes gets thrown away or thrown in the bushes, in this case, virtually the day after. The fact is that our folks aren't being provided the information. And that falls upon me as your representative. That's my fault. And so what I'm going to do going forward is to propose that we come up, this body as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission, come up with better methods by which to inform our people as to what's going on, not just doing the bare minimum of an archaic ineffective standard set forth by the law, but to be more proactive in that regard. I do know that the constituents in this case feel a bit of a personal slight because they evidently were sold a bill of goods with regards to the proposition of a two-family duplex or multiple duplexes. Two duplexes, I believe, that number since what, quadrupled since that point, which certainly changes everybody's thought process and everybody's tone. If there's another takeaway from this, it's to not rely upon the words of an investor or a developer, that oftentimes maybe their intent is to deceive in order to keep public interests down so that something can get passed by only to change, to move the goalposts after the fact. So I'm going to do a better job making sure my folks are better made aware and that this is more of a transparent process anytime our neighborhoods are effective in the future.
Thank you for that. And just, you know, the wild suggestion, I don't know how far $50 would go in sending out a letter. You know, the old-fashioned letter to the people involved. In this case, there, you know, less than 50, at least in the immediate vicinity, not counting, you know, all the streets behind. There's so many people that come through there.
Yep. Mr. Perkins, I think we need to move on. Thank you very much, and thank you for your comments, Mr. Reeves. We'll gladly take these things and we'll be looking at these. And like you said, Mr. Reeves, I think that was a very good point. I've already visited with other council members. And one thing I even emphasized to the group yesterday, you know, whatever we did, we need to do it better. And so I think that's a good point. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to make any public comments? If not, we'll move right into our agenda. And this is the second reading of an ordinance to authorize the city to conduct business with certain individuals who serve as members of the city council, city employees, various commissions, and boards of the city of Beaufort. And this is for Ms. Hinkle, being employed at a local bank. Is there a motion to read the ordinance by title only?
No move.
Is there a second? Seconds? Got a second, I think, Ms. Bennet, you got the second. Okay, council, please cast your votes.
Sorry. I can't until I...
A little technology, don't we?
Yes. Isn't it not going to let me go because Fred's...
We can... Put Fred in absent or...
Yeah. Mark him absent.
Yeah. Maybe that will...
It's not gonna...
Mr. Perkins, I'm gonna talk with you.
I guess we'll do this the old-fashioned way. Yeah. I think you have to do something on the computer. I'm not sure.
Wayne, out of curiosity, does your neighborhood have a Facebook page? Does your neighborhood have a Facebook page?
Not to my knowledge.
See, Sawmill does. I don't know. You do too?
Is that legit?
Sawmill?
No. Any Facebook.
No, not...
Okay, go ahead. Confirm again there, guys.
Okay, Mr. Meissen, please read the ordinance by title only.
Yes, sir. An ordinance to authorize the city of Beaufort to conduct business with certain individuals who serve as members of the city council, city employees, various commissions, and boards of the city of Beaufort.
Okay. Any further discussion? Is there a motion to further suspend the rules and wait the third reading?
No move.
Motion to second. Please cast your votes. Okay, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance? Motion.
Second.
Has a motion and... Yeah, we have the emergency clause. Yeah, we got it on there. Yeah. So a motion to adopt the ordinance, and we have the second, but Ms. Bennet?
Lackey.
Lackey and Ms. Bennet. Okay, council, please cast your votes. Okay. All right. Mr. Meissen, would you please read the emergency clause?
Yes, sir. Due to the need to ensure underhanded financial services and maintain continuity of operations for the benefit of the citizens of Beaufort, where it is declared, therefore the ordinance shall be in full force in effect from and after its passage through...
Sir, a motion to adopt the emergency clause. Motion.
Second.
No, you're good. You're good. Okay. We are... Yep, we are. That has passed, and let me move on to the other one. And thank you, Ms. Quarter. This is not Ms. Davis today, so thank you, Ms. Quarter. This is not her day job, I promise you, so we had to beg and plead to get her to...
Well, you got a good one.
Yeah, we've got a good one here, so... And we'll slow down a little bit, Jennifer. Okay, this is the second reading of an ordinance to authorize the city to conduct business with certain individuals who serve as members of the city council, city employees, various commissions, and boards of the city of Beaufort. And that would be Mr. Roberts. Is there a motion to read the ordinance by title only?
No move.
Okay.
Second.
Yeah, we have a second. Well, I think we got a second. We're just waiting for the... Yeah, council, please cast your votes. Okay, Mr. Meissen?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to authorize the city of Beaufort to conduct business with certain individuals who serve as members of the city council, city employees, various commissions, and boards of the city of Beaufort.
Discussion? Not? Is there a motion to further suspend the rules and wait the third reading?
No move. Second.
Okay, please cast your votes. Okay, passed. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance? Motion.
Second.
Motion to second. Okay, Mr. Mercy Clause. Mr. Meissen, would you please read the mercy clause?
Yes, sir. Due to the need to ensure uninterrupted financial services and maintain continuity of operations for the citizens of Beaufort, where it is declared, therefore the ordinance shall be in full force in effect from and after its passage through...
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the mercy clause?
No move.
Second.
Motion to second. Okay, council, please cast your votes. Okay, next, going to new business. Next on the agenda is consider resolution adopting a redevelopment plan, the former Gray's Hospital location. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance? Oh, well. Is there a motion to read the ordinance by title only?
No move.
Second.
Motion to second. Okay, council, please cast your votes.
Sorry. I thought just thought I was catching up.
Mr. Meissen? Got it? Okay, yeah, we're there.
Adoption of redevelopment plan for former Gray's Hospital location.
Okay, any discussion? This is for, we're trying to raise the building, lower it down. So this is just kind of a formality. A lot of people think we're redeveloping it. We're actually trying to get a blighted building moved down, just to kind of for the record. We've had many individuals to look at the facility and due to the structure being solid concrete inside, they could not revitalize it into apartments, homeless, or anything like that to be habitated. Habit... Habitated? I forget what... Yeah. You guys know what I'm trying to say here, so... It's been a long day, and I haven't had enough red bull. Or maybe too much.
Asbestos, too.
Asbestos. And also, you know, the procedure is they'll clean the building. The next thing is we're seeking a grant, which is going to be a pilot program. Hopefully, we'll be successful in getting the building cleaned up, and then we will get the funding to take the building down. And at this time right now, there is no plans for anything but green space, but it would be owned by the city of Beaufort. So just wanted to give you that information.
And just to be clear, our goal is to, the funding that we would get would enable us to remove the building without any cost to the city of Beaufort.
That's correct. That is correct. Is there a motion to further suspend the rules and wait the second and third readings?
No move.
Second.
Motion to second. Okay, council, cast your votes. Okay, motion carries. Okay, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
I need it.
No move.
Second.
Motion to second. Please cast your votes. Is there a motion to adopt the emergency clause?
No move.
Second.
Motion to second.
Restless thing as far as I hear.
You should probably read it.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. I got on the line. There's no emergency clause on the resolution.
Oh, there's not an emergency clause. Okay. No emergency clause. Sorry, guys. On a resolution, yeah. There's not have to be an emergency clause on that resolution, so we can move forward, get the document in, and our grant, what we were planning development, will pursue this. Okay, next on the agenda is to consider the levy of taxes for the year 2025, payable in 2026. The current millage is five mills for the city general fund and one mill for fireman's pension fund. Is there a motion to set the millage as presented?
No move.
Second.
A motion to second. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, like so. Okay.
I don't know if you need to note or not, but that is the saying that it's been...
Yeah, that is the same that it has been for the last 19 years, so... Okay, next on the agenda is consider resolution authorizing the purchase of property located at 1495 20th Street in Beaufort. This is adjacent and contiguous. It's our property and over by the community center where the new, basically the roundabout road is going in. There's a residence there. We've been talking back and forth on there for about two years, and we have come to an agreement to purchase this property. So would someone like to introduce the resolution?
I'd like to introduce the resolution, Tabitha.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. Is there a motion to read the resolution by title only?
No move.
Second.
Motion to second. Okay, council, please cast your votes.
Media's pressure. Scale one to ten, I think going to the ten, that's probably five.
Okay, Mr. Meissen, read the resolution by title only, please.
Yes, sir. Resolution authorizing the purchase of property located at 1495 20th Street in Beaufort.
Any further discussion? Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
No move.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Council, please cast your votes. Okay, moving right along. Next on the agenda is Chief John Scarborough with the monthly police department report.
Good evening, I guess. I don't really have anything other than what I sent you guys in the monthly report, other than Lieutenant Leonard and Investigator Williford secured another step grant. It's about $45,000. $8,000 would be for some radars, $6,000 for some lighters, is basically a radar. $3,300 for some PBTs, and then about $28,000 for officers and overtime. So other than that, I don't really have anything other than what you guys got in the report, unless you guys have questions. They did do some training last week or two on some less lethal stuff. Got sort of some certifications on it, some old shotguns that we've had for years. We just converted them to less lethal shotguns, so...
And I know you're talking, which we'll reveal that later, but I do, we do have an industry that's visiting with us about possibility of...
Have a meeting with them.
We'll reveal that later on.
Thursday.
Hopefully so. Yeah. They want to donate some funds to the PD, which that's always good.
Yep.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for chief? Thank you, sir.
Good. Thanks.
Okay, city engineer, Mr. Damon Johnson.
Well, a ton of things to report. I mean, of course, as you know, we have projects ongoing. Things are just plugging right along. I mean, if you drive by any of the sites, you can see, you know, progress week by week. There will be some of the subs in the parks project that we, that are, they're going to build, some of the specific components are going to be showing up over the next month or so, and so that'll kind of be exciting to see some of the kind of specific parts of the park kind of come into life. Probably the most difficult issue that we've been working with in the parks and the water plant is the fact that we've got to build a water intake structure, and we're trying to build the park at the same time. And of course, you have two contractors who both think that their project is the most important, so... And both are equally important for different reasons. So I've been working with both of them to try to help us all get along, and we'll see how the consequences of kind of shuffling some of the park work around so they can work on the intake. I'm hoping in the next week or so, we'll get an updated schedule from the park project, and we'll kind of see how that plays out. Water plant is running fairly well for what it is. Wastewater, I know most of y'all, hopefully all of y'all have been down in wastewater at one point at the beginning of the plant. You know, there's three large screws. Of course, you know, the great thing is when you build a new facility, you have all new stuff, but also that all gets put in on the same day. And so we had, in about a two-week period, two of those three screw pumps had a major failure. Kind of unforeseeable failure, but Friday we were able to get... So we had one. We've been running on one, which one pump can run perfectly fine unless it breaks, you know, or unless we have like a huge rain event, which fortunately we did not. But on Friday, the guys worked, I think, about 16 hours. They finally got all the parts in, and that's the biggest delay to getting those repaired was the parts to get it were six or eight weeks for some of them. And we were able to fast-track some of them so we could get, because we were kind of in a bind. And so they, you know, real happy with those guys. They worked hard on Friday, and most of them, it was their day off. They worked from daylight to dark, got that thing, got a second pump up and running, so we don't have any problems there. Otherwise, the street department's going to be doing some painting around town right before, trying to get that done, you know, freshening it up, parking lines on this, you know, payload parking. And we don't have a lot of streets with center lines, but there are a few, and so they're going to be trying to catch up those and refresh those. So people should be seeing them around town doing that, trying to get that done before the weather gets too wet and too cold, which we're kind of pushing the envelope on that here. But anyway, really nothing spectacular going on, just kind of business as usual right now. Keep us pretty busy, but I think things are going about as smooth as we can expect. No big issues. Issues on construction projects are always worth some because they usually mean money. So we're trying to keep those at bay as best we can, so... Unless y'all have anything, any questions for me, or anything specific you'd like me to discuss, I'm good.
Related to the construction projects, where would you say we are in terms of timeframe for our original expectations?
So I think Parks is probably right on schedule now. I do think that there's going to be some delays that are out of their control because of the water plant project. Yet to completely get that figured it out. But the water plant project, last week, we had a meeting, and they're saying they're about two or three weeks behind where they want to be. They're also laid out some measures that they're going to implement with some of their subcontractors to rectify that. So, you know, get two or three weeks behind, it might take you three or four months to make that up, but they're very serious about trying to get those two or three weeks back, so we'll see how that goes.
I had a citizen that said there was a hole in asphalt on Craig Street, and y'all apparently have fixed it, and they're very thankful.
Okay. Yeah, so we have had a couple guys going around, I think last week and this week, with the, we have a patching trailer that they go around and look for things like that to patch, so...
Good.
Okay.
All right. Thank you all. Chief Scarborough, we're going to get him on the next one. He had a meeting tonight. Of course, one reason... Yeah. I'm sorry. Chief McCollum. I was looking at one of them, and I just scratched out Chief... But anyway, he had a fire meeting tonight, and we'll try to get him on the next schedule. And so... Yeah, and so next is the financial report, as usual. If you have any questions or comments, don't hesitate to check with myself or Ms. Davis. And I'm going to move right into mayor comments. The next scheduled meeting, and one reason that we switched to the 7th instead of the 14th, we've had a couple, we've got a lot. Of course, everybody has other obligations and trips and business things, so appreciate everybody coming together. I know Mr. Krug hated to miss, but he had some other obligations that he had scheduled for this, and hopefully he's having a good time, and we know he is. So the 28th will be our next scheduled meeting. We have a couple of fixed asset transfers. Just for the record, 2011 L-720 box truck was transferred from sanitation to the Parks Department. You can see we recycle quite well around here. When you start seeing the antique tags, you know it's the ultimate sacrifice, but then we had a 2023 Mack truck from sanitation was traded on the buyback program for a new truck. So anyway, all right, some, I'm proud to say that BB's Burger was chosen the People's Choice Title of 2025 at Arkansas Food Hall of Fame. Quite an honor for them, and it was presented by Arkansas Heritage. So congratulations to them. Also, first place in blind judging at the Miracle League of Arkansas. They had a burger competition, and Jesse James Foods won there. So two local businesses, food eateries there, that got an award, so congratulations. And let me move on down through here. City County Connection Meeting is tomorrow night.
No, it's Thursday.
Thursday night, okay. Let me skip, yeah. Maybe I'll get a night off tomorrow night. It will be Thursday night, starting at 5:00, and Bad Boy will be presenting. Last time they presented was in 2015, so you know, since then, the sales, so looking forward to hearing their program. forward to hearing their program on Thursday night. And usually remarks will start around 5:30, not right at 5:00. 5:30 is more of a social, but if anyone, anyone is invited in this, will be at the River Restaurant, and I'm assuming it will be upstairs.
Downstairs this time.
Oh, it's going to be downstairs. Okay.
I think they already had something upstairs.
Oh, they do. So we need to let, we need to make sure that...
It's on our post in the...
Oh, we need to make sure Bad Boy knows that, because I know they've got a presentation as well, so we need to make sure. This Thursday, yes. And it is the second Thursday, just because of, sometimes we have to switch from the first Thursday to the second. And let's see, one other thing I'd like to mention is Mr. Jeff Owens, posthumously received the lifetime achievement award last Thursday night, Thursday evening, in Fort Smith at the Arkansas Parks and Tourism. Myself, and Parks Director Lowen Lermott, and Steve Nichols, who's our operation and maintenance of our parks, and council member Lackey Moody, and Jeff's father, Mr. Danny Owens, was there to accept the award, so quite an honor. 23rd of this month, we will have the ribbon cutting on our new Greenway Trail out here, and we're going together at First Methodist Church. I did not get permission to use that, but I thought that'd be a good area for folks to come in, and it's at 1:00 on the 23rd. That will be our ribbon cutting. And I think that's all my comments, and with all my scribbling, I think we're down to liaison reports. Not, let's go into council comments. Ms. Quarter?
Y'all, I forgot to make my little list of everybody in alphabetical order, so I'm just going to start going around the table. Ms. Hinkle?
Yes, I've had a couple of citizens reach out about the hours of our animal control and what animals they are choosing to pick up and not pick up. Availability, like there's some concern and some pretty dangerous, I guess the mail carriers have been bitten over on West Side, and so I'll send the emails to you.
Yeah, please forward that to me as well.
Okay. Hey, Mr. Nate?
No comment.
Mr. Roberts?
No.
Ms. Bennett?
Sorry.
Uh-huh. Wayne?
None.
Paige?
None.
Okay.
Okay, I guess we're to, if there's no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Motion to second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.